That you all are here because of the importance of the issues that we will be discussing tonight that are long overdue and it's time, it's time to take action, it's time to make things happen, it's time to find out what options are available for us out there and then see how we collectively, not just the city, not just the residents, but other agencies that we're going to have to deal with, how we can all work together to come to some good solutions, resolutions, and make things a lot better for all of us. So I would first like to, if I could, just take a moment and introduce my colleagues that are here. Mayor Ordus, Mayor Frank Ordus, thank you for being here. Commissioner Judge Schwartz, thank you for being here. Vice Mayor Tom Good, there you are, Vice Mayor Tom Good. Commissioner Castillo is here, I see him. I would also like to thank City Manager Dodge for being here. City Attorney Sam Warren. And I'm surprised he's still talking to me after all I've been putting him through. Our engineer, City's engineer Carl Kennedy. We have our police department here and I would ask that, because I just love to look at uniforms, if y'all would stand up so that we could see those. Always we thank them and always we depend upon them. Mike Stam, our economic director is here. I know that our police chief and our fire chief were going to try to get here, but I don't see them as yet, but maybe they were called off, but we're here. And also, I did get an opportunity to speak with our school board member Patty Good, who sends her regrets that she's not able to be here this evening, but she did offer support to continue with us on communication and how we can collectively get together to make, you know, good things happen for, at our schools and in our communities, specifically dealing with our traffic issues. So I thank her always for her support with us. And she was hiding. Christina Sorenson is your, you know, your title, I always want to say Parks and Rec, but what is your exact title? Director of Cultural Arts, Christina Sorenson. She hides, she always hides, she always hides. So tonight, we're going to, we're going to, first, we're going to have some, a little bit of a slideshow, I'd like to show you all some things that are happening out in the communities, not just in your community, but in other communities that are around. But leading up to that, we will do that, but I want to ask City Attorney, if you would sort of, because this is, this is a meeting that we're having tonight, to sort of explain, if you would, the rules of the road as to how this meeting has to take place.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to River of Grass. Nice to be here, I've been here for a long time. It's nice to see all of you here this evening. I am Sam Warren, the City Attorney. This is a public meeting in the context of being public. Open to all of you, chose to be here this evening. The doors unlocked, in part, the parking lot. Welcome to be here. It is not a City Commission meeting, however. There are commissioners that are here, the mayor, the vice mayor, the commissioner. It's not a City Commission meeting as such. It is a meeting that's been called by Commissioner Seifel as a town hall meeting. It's not being recorded or taped as it would be in the commission chambers. I'm actually taking notes. It is being taken?
It's being taken, yeah.
It is being taken, and that's nice to see you. That's why we raise the issues. Having said that, there will be conversations that will occur. There is a commission meeting tomorrow night about the tax and the budget hearing, which will be at 6:00 in the evening, followed by a special commission meeting, which has been posted, published, and on the website, at which time the commission may be able to then make some decisions about traffic-related issues. Tonight's not that night where they can actually make physical legal decisions. And commission members who are here recognize that there's a foreseeability, as they say, that tomorrow there'll be discussion about this, and they will have some decisions to make, given the special meeting status. So tonight, under the Sunshine Law, we're in the sunshine in the context of being in a public building, with all of you being present, but it's not a specifically a City Commissioner meeting, it is a commissioners' meeting at which there may be conversation from you, the public, who choose to be heard, at the discussion of the commissioner. But we need to kind of restrict the restriction of the issue of these changes among commissioners, because tomorrow night will be the actual physical legal meeting, and there should be a main decision. And that's the best advice I would give so far.
Thank you. You always give us good advice, good advice. So I'm going to just read something very quickly to you all, and then we're going to actually get into the presentation part of the meeting. So after attending a Chapel Trail HOA meeting a few weeks ago, and listening to the traffic issues that the residents were describing, it was pretty obvious that they needed some help. Oh, thank you, Mayor. But they were not the only areas that also needed some help. There are school traffic flows, flow issues in other locations throughout the city. I am hoping that this initial initiative, and I say initial because we know that we have more to do than just what we're talking about this evening, will be carried out as needed in those areas. Waiting in line to drop off or pick up your child for two hours or more is certainly not acceptable. I am especially concerned with the frustration that this fosters, as I have seen parents parked on the side of the road in the swale, and I watched as that child and parent crossed the street to get to their vehicles, not using the safety of a crosswalk, walking between parked cars and stepping out into oncoming traffic. This is a real health and safety issue. I have spent a great deal of time talking to many residents, meeting with our City Manager, City Attorney, and having discussions with our City Engineer, reviewing what options might be available to help remedy these traffic issues. We will, of course, continue to work closely with our Police Department for Enforcement and our Fire Department for Health and Safety Issues. As an initial request, I am asking for a review, I have asked for a review of four locations. Johnson Street and 208th Avenue, 196th Avenue at Pines Boulevard, 184th Avenue at Sheridan Street, and 196th Avenue at Taft Street. I know there are other locations that will need to be reviewed, but we must start somewhere. Many residents have asked why we allow so many schools to be built so close to each other. And I would ask City Attorney, once again, if you would explain that to our residents?
I can try. It's a delicate subject, because under Florida law, school districts have what's called super jurisdiction. They have powers and authority that transcend those of local government. And local government has very limited authority in the context of where schools may be sighted. Traditional public schools, and there are many in the City Penridda Pines, charter schools, which are run and operated by the City Penridda Pines Public Schools, of course. There are limitations on what local government can actually do. This city has made every legal effort, every operational effort to regulate through site planning and other activities that are conducted in Mike Stam's office on a regular basis, the location of schools, the obligations that are occasioned by a development of schools, and the impacts of traffic on schools. So those things are, as best we can do it, are being currently regulated within the city code. There are other intervening things that happen. We have relationships with FDOT, which is the state agency. We have relationships with Broward County, and we have other relationships with other cities in the context of traffic and traffic enforcement matters. So in the context of this issue, specifically the regulation and the ability to simply say no to a school without putting the city under a bus legally, we have limited rights, limited authority, but the rights that we do have, the authority that the city does retain, are currently in the code, and the city's made every rational, good-faith diligent effort to protect those interests, recognizing that public interest need to be served when they, when they in fact review those kinds of applications. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Sam. While we could not prohibit schools from being built, we were able to request certain limits, such as school population size and agreements for busing students. Staff has been reviewing those agreements to ensure that all are in compliance. While in the past, it was true that school traffic improved after about the first two weeks or so, that is not the case anymore. Parents, schools, and nearby community residents are being negatively impacted during the entire school year. Residents that need to travel to work, shopping, or an appointment are blocked in and must wait, they must wait it out for the traffic to move. We need more through lanes to move that type of traffic also. COVID has played a significant part in our school traffic problems. Many parents have chosen to not put their children on a school bus, but are instead driving them to school. However, should that thought change with parents, we should again visit the option that was offered previously of allowing parks, et cetera, to be used as bus depot drop-offs for scheduled bus services that would take children to participating schools. The item I placed on the commission agenda started the process of finding solutions. While some solutions might be a little more in-depth, it seems like there might be some immediate relief available for several locations. We are dealing mostly with city roads, so that does make the process a little easier, although there are still regulations that must be followed, and other agencies are involved. So I'm now going to ask our City Engineer Carl Kennedy, who has a PowerPoint that he wants to show to you all. And so we're going to go through his entire PowerPoint, because it's on different locations. We're going to go through that first, and then we'll come back and take each location quickly if there are questions still remaining about what his presentation is. So, Mr. Kennedy, if you would, please?
School traffic issues in the City Penridda Pines. First, we're going to show a video taken traveling on Johnson Street, east of 27. It's kind of grainy, but you'll get an idea of the traffic and the stacking. Now, this is, I'm sorry, this is traveling eastbound from 27 towards 208 on Johnson Street. Cars are queuing, going east. These are a couple other videos, cars are traveling westbound on Fourth Street. As you can see, they're not traveling. There are cars passing them, both illegally in the eastbound lane, and occasionally it will be a vehicle going westbound, or excuse me, eastbound. Okay, this is showing vehicles on Pines Boulevard, going eastbound at 196. And picture on the left is northbound 196 before Pines Boulevard. We're going to look at some of the potential roadway improvements that are to be studied. And these are preliminary in nature. We haven't made a final decision on any of these. We're going to have a traffic engineer prepare actual studies and plans to implement any of these particular improvements. The first one, northwest 208th Avenue at Johnson Street. There's a significant queuing problem traveling northbound on 208 to Johnson. It extends from beyond northwest Fourth Street up to Johnson Street. Proposed solution is, we have enough right-of-way on 208th Avenue that we can widen it and add an additional lane, or possibly two, and we can have a dedicated northbound left turn lane from beyond northwest Fourth Street all the way up to Johnson. So that will allow additional queuing. Unfortunately, Johnson Street, the right-of-way is constrained west of northwest 208th Avenue. The roadway cannot be widened, and there's as many lanes on that roadway as there possibly could ever be. Second portion of 208 is that Pines Boulevard. And I said, we have lots of right-of-way on 208, so we can widen it and add at least two lanes the entire stretch. If we do that, we can convert one of the southbound lanes that's existing to a left turn lane, so we'll have a total of two left turn lanes. We can add one north and one southbound lane by widening. And we can also add one southbound right turn lane at the intersection. Those are possibilities, like I said, due to the right-of-way that we currently have. Northwest 184th Avenue, Sheridan. An easy addition to this traffic could be a northbound right turn lane at 17, well, from northwest 17th Street up to Sheridan Street. We can change one of the existing boardout lanes and make it a dual right turn at Sheridan Street. But we have enough right-of-way that we could have a dedicated right turn lane all the way from 17th Street. We're also investigating other approaches, Broward County, on the other two approaches to this intersection from eastbound and westbound Sheridan Street. Northwest 196th Avenue, Taft. We're examining using the parking lot for these sports fields here. And this could allow for a significant amount of additional queuing. The way this would potentially operate, cars traveling westbound on Taft Street could turn it into the parking lot. We'd have to make some modifications to the parking lot to allow cars to enter off of Taft Street as opposed to driveway adjacent to the school, which isn't school right-of-way, which is school right-of-way, it doesn't belong to the city. So we would need to make some adjustments on Taft Street to allow cars to enter the parking lot, queue, and then exit. We're not sure about how students would enter and exit if that could possibly happen in the parking lot, but that's something that needs to be studied. We could also add turn lane extensions on Taft Street and possibly 196 for additional queuing, and those are things to be studied. Southwest 196th Avenue, the soccer park. This is the southwest corner of Pines Boulevard and 196. You can see the two arrows down in the bottom right of the picture. We could potentially use the parking area here for queuing. And it's likely that if this was to happen, there'd have to be some modifications to the BERM, which is on the west side of the screen there, to allow students to access the school from the parking lot. Those are details that would certainly need to be worked out. Also, southwest 196th Avenue, along with the Third Street, this is right near the entrance to the soccer park as well. We have enough right-of-way that we can add two additional lanes on 196. So we can add a northbound lane as well as a southbound lane from southwest Third Street to Pembroke Road. Even though Pembroke Road's not widened yet, it will be. So we can increase the capacity of this road. North of Third Street at Pines Boulevard, there's already four lanes, actually more with the turn lanes. We did an order of magnitude cost estimate for some of these potential improvements. Like I said, these are not final engineered plans or anything, so they need to be studied further and a final set of plans prepared. But just order of magnitude cost estimates for work on northwest 208th Avenue from Pines Boulevard to Johnson Street. Estimate about 1.2 million would be needed for that. That northwest 184, Sheridan, close to a million. You know, that number's very rough, because like I said, we're still working with Broward County Traffic Engineering on additional solutions at that location. Northwest 196th, Taft. If we just were to do the turn lane extensions, approximately $300,000 could take care of that. If we use the park for additional queuing, the, if we do not extend the turn lanes, you know, the cost will be minimal. It would be just the amount of money we'd need to get cars in and out of the parking lot on Taft. And same as with the soccer park in southwest 196. We would anticipate little cost for that. And for 196, all the way from Pembroke up to Third, if we were to widen that, add a couple extra lanes. Estimate that to be about fair and a half million. So, those are, like I said, just order of magnitude cost estimates. They're not final, and we haven't done the final engineering. You know, these are just some of the areas that we have problems and some of the solutions that's certainly not all of the problems that are going to be solved with these approximately four locations. Some of the potential funding sources. I'll let Mr. Dodge expand on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Do we, Mr. Dodge, before you get into that part of it, do we want to see if there are any questions about any of these particulars, or do you want to do yours first?
I think, as Mr. Bruce stated.
Okay, go ahead, all right.
We are trying to identify funding for all of these projects. A couple of them, such as the Somerset issue and the Chapel Trail, if we can utilize our own facilities, that should be a relatively easy and a quick process. We just need to deal with both of those schools and working out queuing and how that would work at those locations. The funding sources that are offered through the state and through our local MPO, we've had conversations with them, because a lot of times it takes a few years to get road projects approved and ranked and then funded. So we've had some preliminary discussions to see if the city fronted the money to get the projects moving much more rapidly and enter into an agreement with them that when the funding source becomes available when that road is ranked, they will reimburse the city. There's also, we're having conversations with Broward County regarding the penny cert tax that was passed by the voters a few years ago, and asking the same thing, identifying and ranking those projects that when they do come up in the future, we could enter into an agreement and use some of those dollars to also move forward. Another source of funding that we have is the United States Government Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. That has not been finalized at this point. But the last time we checked, our city is probably allocating close to $20 million for that. If those funds come through and how they are to be spent, most of these can be funded at this time. But as Commissioner Seifel mentioned earlier, this area of the city, we've received the most complaints and concerns about traffic around the schools. So we are going to be looking at doing, in the future, evaluating all of the areas within our city and ranking them as to where the greatest need is. And I know Commissioner Seifel has mentioned that she's going to further explore that. So those would be some ways in which we would certainly try to fund this without any need for any kind of a tax increase.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. And so the words, "no tax increase," sounds really good, really good. And I would say that that would be something that I would always be advocating for. Absolutely, first, check out all other funding sources that are available to you before you start talking to residents to give us more for something that should already be provided for them. So, we're going to go very quickly before we move on with the rest of this. There were about four locations that Mr. Kennedy spoke about tonight. Are there any questions that you all may have about a specific location that was not answered for you tonight? If you put, all right, so I'm just going to say this. If you want to come down to the microphone, come down. If you would just tell us your name, and please, for the sake of everybody, let's not repeat questions, and let's try to keep them as safe as possible so that we don't end up being here forever tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
The announcement of a lawyer from the Enqueted at Pembroke Pines.
Yes, sir.
184 Pembroke Road, between Pines Boulevard. It's been a problem for 20 years. Mr. Dodge, we've met before with the mayor, with the late Susan V. Cass. It wasn't mentioned. We've got a serious problem. We've been investing a lot of money in our duty officers, traffic lights, stop signs, posted no parking signs, and the problem continues. Residents cannot get in, cannot get out. Please help us.
Okay, what I would ask would be that you would send an email. You send it to City Manager, you can send it to me. We will certainly start addressing that. Like I said, these were the initial ones that we were getting the most complaints. And it's just initial, we're going to, this is going to have to keep moving forward. But the old saying of, "how do you eat the elephant, one bite at a time?"
I've been continuously speaking with Commissioner Castillo. I've been also speaking with the police, Police Captain Sekes. Remember me out there? This has been going on for years, since 2002.
I apologize to you, but guess what? We're taking initiatives to go forward. Thank you, sir.
The location again for that?
Yes.
184, between Pines Boulevard and Pembroke Road. We've got a starter school.
You'll send a quick email, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Steve?
Hi, Steve, 20441, northwest Fourth Street. I heard about all the areas you're talking about. Could you please also look into 202nd Avenue as it goes southbound from Pines Boulevard as perhaps to Johnson, can that be converted to four lanes?
Would you please, again, send a request that that's looked at, and we will certainly act upon that.
Okay, thank you. And also, could we hear what's going to happen on Fourth Street tonight? Is that going to be something?
We might go and give you a little bit of that in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Gail Galway, 431 Northwest 200th Avenue. We have a traffic problem with students going to West Broward High School. On September 15th, in a matter of 30 minutes, we had 164 cars go through our neighborhood from northwest 186 to Fourth Avenue to 200, and on over to Pasadena 1, into the high school. And I have contacted the police department. I have talked to Captain Javier Diaz, who's very helpful. He could have tried to monitor it all. They are counting the number of cars and the speeds. These cars are not going slowly. They are speeding to get to the school. So I hope that you can put that in your notes and look into that, too.
Again, I would ask if you would just send a text or an email and with the specific location, what you're talking about, so that we can then take action on that.
Okay, and that you go specifically to Mr. Dodge?
If you could go to Mr. Dodge, it would be fine, yes. Thank you so much. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Al Guanag, I'm one of the directors of Astasur.
Yes, sir.
And it wasn't mentioned here, though. And I know that it's a state road, because it's Hollywood Boulevard, Pines Boulevard. We have a major problem there. I mean, people are even going into the communities, lining up inside the communities in the turn lane. The officers were there a couple of weeks ago, and the officers are there. It's a controlled environment. The minute the officers are not there, that citation sign means nothing. People are blocking the entrance. I get calls every day from homeowners. I'm being realistic. Nothing that we're talking about here is going to happen soon in two years. There's no question about it. So...
I'm a little more optimistic about it.
Yeah. By then, I don't think, I hope we don't have any COVID issues. But the reality is, is that we need to really be looking at short-term things, too, not just long-term. Because the schools and the people in the private schools and public schools, they need to take some ownership of this. They created this problem. When you create a problem, you own the solution. You know, and you can't put it on the list. They just can't do it. It's impossible. They're being misread. I can guarantee you, I've been cursed out by people.
I apologize if that happened to you, and again, I would ask, so that we can start the process with you, if you would send that email.
I've already done that. I got film, I got videos, I got everything. I've already done that.
When did you send?
And we really need to get some, somebody needs to be, the schools need to own this. They need to own this.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Terry Moody. I'm president of Holly Lake Association. One of the issues that we want addressed... One of the issues that want addressed here is the problem on Highway 27, turning onto Johnson Street. It backs all the way down 27. So everyone turns into our community, which is a one-way in, one-way out. And then at that school time, our residents cannot exit. They make the U-turn and block our people in. So that's a problem because people are late for work, they can't get out, kids are late for school. The, I was at another meeting like this about three years ago, I guess, when Commissioner Castillo promised to widen 208 back then. And it's still an issue where I work at Chapel Trails and parents can't get out onto 208 to get their kids to school on time. So 208 and 27 and Johnson are just two huge problems.
Thank you, thank you. We'll add that to that particular intersection to the list. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sabrina from Astancia. I want to address some things. First, thank you for doing this. I've been a Somerset parent and I've been a Chapel parent and now I am West Broward parent. And I want to talk a little about being a parent. You have the pressure to take a kid to school early in the morning. I, I was in Astancia, I was pressuring my homeowners association to open our second gate. We made a huge investment to open the second gate to allow us to come safely because we got Franklin in front. And now we have Somerset. As a Somerset parent and living in several Pines for the last 20 years, we have an issue because the majority of the students from Somerset, for example, don't serve the people from Pembroke Pines. There's a lot of people coming from Minamar, west of university. And I know for sure because I was very old and sometimes I gave rise to kids thinking that they live around the neighborhood and I went up west, I mean east of university. So I, as the person from my neighborhood say, I think the city should address before doing all these streets that the kids who are out of town have to come in buses. It's not other way. We need the bus. And the people from our area are pulling. I mean, we need to take little steps before we do the bigger steps. Also, at the beginning in Somerset, some parents were allowed to park in Price Park. This is a long time ago. Then they were not allowed to park in Price Park. And the people had to do an incredible loop-a-loop inside the school. I thought for the people of Hidden Lake and Malibu Bay because those people were miserable. And that didn't solve anything. Actually, mothers taking kids to school are more efficient. Parking, going to pick up the kids and come back because the queue for safety don't allow the kids to come walking to you. You have to wait until they're calling over there and the line doesn't move. And if the widening of the streets ain't going to take the green areas, then we don't want to have any place to, you know, ride bicycles or have anything.
It's not, it's not going to necessarily, if there's a sidewalk and a bike path, those will all be taken into consideration.
Okay. And the last thing is, as you say, that the only thing that we have at the city is that we limit supposedly the amount of students in schools. We are very lucky that we got many schools that they are really good schools. But once more, I don't think the limits are being full yet. I mean, we are.
As I said, as I said earlier, there were some agreements that were made, some site plan agreement. And those things that we have asked staff to go in and to review all of those from beginning to even an amendment and from beginning to now, to see if everything is in compliance. And so that is all part of what we are, just exactly what you're saying.
I will, you know, to finish, really address, I mean, all the widening of the streets is fabulous. But I think the people, those who live in this area, need to come in buses.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Hi, yes, ma'am.
I'm Harvey Rambis. I'm at 117, 1673 Northwest 208 Terrace. Hidden Lake.
Yes, ma'am.
Which my buddy Angelo referred to as Route Zero. If we're not out of our house by 7:30 in the morning, we're not, we're at least an hour getting out of our house. We have to pray that we have everything with us when we leave because we will not come back in. We have to be back home by 2:30 in the afternoon or we're not getting in. The only way we can get in, back into our neighborhood, which only has one entrance, is to go all the way out Sheridan Street to US 27 and Johnson Street. Expanding 208 is good, but the problem with that is they line the left side all the way down to Pines. And if you try to come in that way, you're making it illegal entrance to try to go around that traffic. If you're coming in Johnson Street, they're lined up back that way and you can't get in there.
And what we're asking for on 208 is not only those additional, like the left turn, the left turn lanes, but you heard me say a through lane.
Right.
A through lane.
Right.
Which would then, which would then not get you behind and in the line waiting with other cars. You would be able to go through.
Right. They aren't doing the queuing in the park. The problem is the parents don't want to get into the park because they can't get out. So then they go two miles an hour down Johnson Street hoping that their kids will see them. You know, I sympathize with the people from US 27 and Holly Lake because they know what it's like. We have to go that way in order to get in. I appreciate Angelo putting a police officer there in the morning and in the afternoon. I appreciate our police officers. We would be dead without you guys. You know, I don't know if we're gonna put a sign. Maybe we should all, all the residents in Hidden Lake should have a sign, "I'm Hidden Lake." So they'll.
Well, hopefully that through lane, that through lane will help alleviate your problem because you'll be able to not get tied up in the waiting. You'll be able to have a through lane that will help you with that.
There's nowhere. You know, Johnson Street is nowhere.
There are on 208 and that's what we were just talking about on 208, to be able to give you that. So we are, we are working. We definitely, that's part of the plans.
But I especially wanted to thank our police officers because we would be dead in that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Vargas?
Good evening, Commissioner Seifel. I'm Mr. Mayor and Commissioners here. My name is Kervargas, 12507 Northwest East Kidman. I'm not necessarily in the West West. I'm on 2875, west of Flamingo. However, I'm also a traffic engineer. And in the previous life, I used to be a city traffic engineer for a year, you know, with schools, school districts and all that. So I'm really want to thank you and congratulate you for the leadership that you are doing, trying to come up with all these improvements. However, that is a midterm or long-term solution. We have a crisis right now. There is a needed crisis that needs to be taken care of with immediate solutions. And as many people have spoken here, this is not only the city's burden. You as the city, you should take the leadership and that's your role. But in this table should be the schools. Somerset School, the Brown School District, should be the DPA's, the homeowners who are stakeholders, the business owners for all those warehouses that have been impacted also. They should all be on the table and we should come up with immediate solutions. It's called transportation demand management and also transportation systems management. We can take quick measures in a couple of five minutes to solve some issues. Like for example, Northwest Fourth Street. All we need to do is put a "no right to" sign. You put a "no right to" sign there, you're taking incentive away for them to be using Northwest Fourth Street. At least that's the way I understand it. Now, okay, in that occasion, you need to close during those hours, only during those hours. But we need to look at what measures can we take quickly. Another thing that, like I mentioned in the email I sent you, we had a similar problem about eight years, 12 years ago with the Lake State Elementary School on 136th Avenue. All we did was expand the number of drop-off places. They had like three or four drop-off places, we expanded to nine, 14 drop-off places. By increasing the number of drop-offs and also dividing the traffic, you manage the demand better. And I know it's also that Somerset's already breaking up over time kids go from first to these or that grade. That's a good idea. But I think using all the rational points, I think in that. What I'm trying to say is, kill us the year 19 for something that probably the best would be implemented six months or nine months from now. But I believe that you need to get together with the stakeholders this week so that by next week, the problems are resolved at least 20 or 30% of them than what they are right now. Because right now, the community is suffering.
Okay, Mr. Vargas, I thank you, I thank you. And I always respect your opinions on everything and, because I know you have a lot of knowledge and experience on doing things. But I know you came in just a little bit late, so you didn't hear some of the early, the early part of it. You mentioned like quick fixes and we did mention the fact that we may have two locations. That may be a rather quick fix, the two, the two, the two schools with the parking, being able to use parking lots to queue cars instead of being on the road. So those were, those were a couple of quick fixes. You also mentioned funding, which was, which Mr. Dodge did talk about, funding and availability of fundings. And so you and I can go over that, you know, more later.
Sure.
And the other agencies. Absolutely. Every time that I've had discussion about this, I have put the importance on not only working with our police department, our fire department, but with the school board, with Broward County, with everybody else that has, and the schools that have, that have, you know, some involvement in this. And they will all be, when we get to the point of taking this further out, because we're looking at the possibility of maybe being able to move things a little bit faster, even with some of the funding because of some availabilities and some stuff that are there. So, but it is clearly not going to be just done in a vacuum with us. We want everybody's buying because we want to fix it once and we want to fix it the right way once. So I appreciate, I appreciate. But you and I can have more conversations.
Thanks for the long term, but also please.
Yep, we're looking at some media.
You provide as much as you can this week.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Steve Hodav. I live in Pasadena Estates and Chapel Trail.
Yes, sir.
And the most logical thing I was thinking about with all these problems is, is any consideration been given to making Chapel Trail a gated community?
I guess you would have to ask your HOA association if that's something that they want to do. Because that's where it would initiate from, correct? They would have to, they would have to make the request and they would have to get with their different, their whole communities to, if they were looking at doing the whole, all of Chapel Trail. That would have to be something, an initiative that would come from your HOA, not from the city.
So that's a possibility.
Well, I guess anything's a possibility if that's what they want to do. But it's not, it's not a city initiative that would come out. It would be from the HOA.
Because the city approved all these schools and created the problem, because I've lived here 32 years and, you know, until now I've had this problem. And I'm asking, could the city, because we pay so much money in taxes, fund the gatedness of our community?
That would be, no, sir, that would be private and that would be up to your HOA. And that would be, they would talk to you if they decided to do it. It would be, you know, an HOA dues increase or cost or assessment or however they would handle it. That would clearly not be anything that the city would participate in or be required to do. That certainly would be an HOA decision.
Well, of course, that would save you a lot of money on all those roads that you're gonna build.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
So I think building a few gates.
Well, maybe you should go, maybe, maybe, and I don't need to be sarcastic or smart, because I appreciate you saying that, that maybe that's where you need to go to your HOA meetings and start talking to your neighbors and see if they want to.
I think it's a solution that you should think about, too.
I have no, the city, I'm sorry, I can't say, the city has no control over that sort of.
Maybe you should suggest that to us and that would solve the problem.
I think that needs to come from a resident, sir.
Okay. The other thing is, I didn't hear any mention tonight, I might have missed it, about widening Pines Boulevard, especially from 196th Avenue to 27.
Mr. Carl, would you answer that, please?
Yes, actually, we just got an email today that they're starting the PDNI study, so it's coming. Okay, so you're working on it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. Donna Spadapino from Dimensions North and Chapel Trail. Hello. Thank you so much, Commissioner Seifel, for having this town hall. I think these conversations, I think these conversations have gone on quite a long time without any resolution. I'm an action person. When is this going to start to be worked on? I mean, I know tomorrow you have a commission meeting. I'm sure there's going to be some type of vote, I hope. I think everyone here hopes. But realistically, when, we need the relief now. It's horrible.
No, Donna, you know, I, I hear you. I mean, I hear all of you on that. And as we said, it looks like we've started in the West because that's where we have heard the most complaints from. And I said it a little earlier, I'm gonna say it again. How do you eat the elephant? One bite at a time. So we're starting, we're starting. This is an initiative that while I, while I actually put it on the agenda, again, I want to thank my colleagues for being in full support of it because it takes all of us to make this happen. So I again want to thank my colleagues for being so supportive of our work. But we did, we did talk about some quicker fixes for a couple of locations. Some of the others, if in fact, we can get more specific information on what he really needs, you know, more details on what City Manager really needs on cost and all of that, there is the opportunity that possibly the city could, you know, front out some money for some of these repairs to get started sooner rather than the later, okay? But we have to be guaranteed with paperwork that we would be able to be reimbursed. And so that is a bit of a process. But City Manager, would you explain that just a little bit again, please, to Ms. Spadapino and to everybody? Thank you.
As I had stated, there's a few possibilities of funding resources, both from the MPO, the county cert tax program that all of us private kind of residents, well, all the private kind of residents that already voted for that penny sales tax. And we apply for projects along with other cities. So we would begin that process. But our negotiations would be that if we have a project and when it is approved, we would ask that we be permitted to build it now, get reimbursed later. And there are also some federal dollars coming down which haven't been totally finalized, but we've been allocated a significant amount of money that would more than take care of this first initial phase. So those funding issues, we can deal with one by one. But our goal always is to reimburse the city for any funds that it puts out.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you haven't even started the process of getting the funding yet?
No, the process, we're just starting these meetings to talk to the community first.
Okay.
To see if you agree with the locations, what we are proposing, you believe is the solution. What was presented this evening, were some projects that really did not cost dollars. But it's a question of determining how we set up queuing lines at different open spaces that the city has that are joining parks to schools. And we're looking at all of those options. But we need to deal with those specific schools to make sure it works. It can interfere with bus service. There are so many state laws that determine how traffic goes into a school. So we have to work with them and we have and we are beginning that process.
I know there's some other areas that brings to mind the buses that I've heard that are offering parents money for them to not drive their kids to school and put them on buses.
Oh, I haven't heard that yet. If you have that information, please send it to me because I'd love to share it with everybody.
I kind of think it was daycare, but I don't want to say for sure, but it was several hundred dollars.
We're rower.
No, but it faked it off. Well, yeah, Toys R Us, well, sorry.
Right. But if you do, if you do, send it to me.
I'll look for it. Yeah. So that's about all. Oh, and the engineer, one question for him. It sounds like we're just moving the problem. And what I mean by that is, I was kind of looking at what you're doing, so instead of them being in the road, there's just going to be another lane, but it's not gonna, I don't see how that's going to help the flow in and out of the schools quicker. It, it's going to stop the traffic in the roads, yes, it'll be a little bit safer, yes, but we're still going to have the problem on the, the extra lanes, the flow of traffic moving into the schools.
You, you will, except we're going to be able to hopefully work with the schools, get them in, in quicker, and then out quicker, because now, like, like the engineer was saying, onto like, say Pine School, aren't going south, more lanes going out, left and right, just get them moving faster and get them moving that, that way. So those were examples of how to get them, but that, again, that is the all-important part of working together with everybody, because like I said, the schools, we have to talk to the schools, they have to, they have to work with us on all of this, they have to be able to see ways that maybe, there's two pickup points, instead of one pickup point, where we can move everything, you know, faster. I don't know that that's the answer, but that's sort of an example of what, what we need to happen.
Fantastic, and thank you for the Pine's Police Department, yes. I don't know, this city has the greatest police department, really.
Yeah, I'm sure. And Donna, thank you for saying that, because we never tell them enough, not that much, we appreciate them, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Great segment, I've been a stance here for twenty years.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, we have traffic, have three signs for three hours, okay, that means idling, creepy traffic. I want to know if the air quality is being monitored at all.
Mr. Dodge?
I can tell you at this point, there is no air quality being monitored.
Okay, what if the air quality was monitored, and turned out to be exceeding local, state, or federal standards, and as the city attorney said, we don't have much leverage over the schools. What if it was found to be exceeding those standards, would that change the equation of leverage over the schools?
Interesting question.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening, I'm Robert Garrison, I live in Pasadena Chapel Trail, I have business located in the Chapel Trail Trail Center, so I didn't pay the property taxes on both of them, so anything you do to save on the taxes is helpful. So, it seems, first of all, I don't know a lot of the dynamics of the public school, the city charter school, and the private charter schools, but.
Well, all, city attorney, you want to speak on that?
In our, in our community, there are public schools, that are essentially controlled and run and managed by the private and school board. There are charter schools in the city member lines, which are run by the city member lines, which is the owner and the operator, and then there are also managed charter schools that are not private. All charter schools in Florida are public schools, they're just not traditional public schools, but they're under state law, they're looked at the same way as other public schools.
All right, thank you.
But, but they have a little bit of different board membership. The city happens to be the premier operator of charter schools in the state, probably the country, but there are, all of them privately run, but they're managed charter schools, but they're not legally different in the context of what they're.
Understood, so there's a lot of different entities to deal with, so, some of the out of the box ideas that I was going to hear about, so, I don't want, and I don't know if it's already foregone conclusion, there's this fixed number of cars that have to be put on the road, but what about eliminating some of the number of cars, and here's where I'm going with that, Somerset split their schedule, so it got real bad, and then it got a lot worse, it got, it got a lot better a few years ago when they split their schedule, because they have K through twelve, and so it cut the number of cars in half at a given time. But another big thing is this, we used to ride our bicycles to school, and now there's no one, there's not a single bike in the bike path, that all started when the helmet law went into effect. Can remember Pine's get rid of that helmet law, and encouraged students to ride their bikes to school?
It's a state, it's a state law, we can't get rid of that law.
Now, and then my last point is that, this lady brought up a point, that there's people from other cities that are coming to those schools, so I have a friend whose children are enrolled at Somerset, he lives in Sunrise, so they're not riding their bikes to school, I mean, they're coming. Is there a way to talk to those entities, to those schools, to try to find out if there's like a park and ride that could be set up?
Not here, yeah, I hear what you're saying, and what the other lady said also, but in all, in all fairness, there may be a, a real fair reason why that child might be attending that's, not, well, well.
It'll be fine, I'm all for a school choice.
No, no.
And you do a park and ride, and then drop your kids off like a hundred at a time, and come in on the school bus, try to get the number of automobiles off of the street. Because it seemed like the approach that was being taken was that we have a thousand cars that don't fit on the road, so let's make the road bigger, the flip side of that is can we get those cars?
Well, I think we're trying to look at both, at both, because as I mentioned, when I, when I spoke earlier about the, the option and the offer that was put out a few years ago, the city, the city manager even, offered out a couple of park locations, like Spring Valley, where I live in Spring Valley, the, the park there, and there were a couple other locations that would be like a bus depot, if you want to call it that, where, where buses would come to pick up, parents would be there with their chi, you know, with their child, leave their child there, they would take the bus, and they would go, that would eliminate, you know, cars going into the school.
Right, because now you have one student, one vehicle, have to be on the.
So we are looking, we are looking at that, that is all part again, what we are looking at trying to do to help with that, not sending all those cars to, you know, to that intersection where they're, where they're, you know, mucking it up and, and filling it up all, all that way, so.
Excellent, thanks for giving us a forum to bring up these things.
Thank you, thank you, sir, thank you for being here. Mr. Bill?
Hello, how are you doing? Thank you for having us. I'm not going to talk so much about traffic, per se, but more about Somerset.
Okay.
And number one, I don't think you give them drop enrollment.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
I can't give them to drop enrollment.
Okay.
Which would be a help. I don't, haven't heard a lot about buses and forcing them to fill up the agreement that they signed in twenty seventeen, which is.
I would ask.
Have forty percent ridership on buses, and they are not, they're not complying with that. I would also suggest that we talk with them, something when I was in high school, we had seven periods, you only went to six, so get, maybe get them to have a one through six and a two through seven, so there's some coming in at a different time period, so that you've got some kind of different level of traffic.
Right, well, that was also, again, another, another one of the items that we talked about at, even in the commission meeting at Grab, with the, with the schools that are in that area, West Broward and Somerset, to, to look at, and again, that's the importance of everybody working together, that, starting and drop off times, how do we, you know, work together to, to.
But it's even changed a little more, that they, they drop off from seven to nine, they don't drop off from seventy, they have a different session kind of starting up and things like that. And another thing, when I was a senior in high school, they were so tight on space, eleventh and twelfth graders went from seven to twelve in the morning, and tenth graders went from.
Had the big split sessions and stuff.
Had the big split sessions, I don't know if those kinds of things would come up with them. The, the one thing that concerns me, which you kind of touched on, and I, you know, I know that the traffic pattern within that Somerset Academy has been looked at, I can't believe they haven't figured out a way, but there's only, it's on that one corner, there's only like one entrance, I don't know how many more people they can get in there, all you're really going to do is rearrange the cars in the line, unless they can change some kind of traffic pattern.
Well, and, and in all fairness, I know, and I know at the last meeting, you brought up also, again, the agreement with Somerset, and you, and you mentioned the, the busing, and when I looked at the agreement with them, it was my understanding that, that, that they did not say that they were guaranteeing forty percent, that they would attempt to get to forty percent.
Right.
So that's a big difference in the language, although the intent, the intent, the intent that we were holding them to was forty, you know, was of forty percent as much as possible. But I would like, if I could, Mr. Stan, could you please just speak a little bit about the Somerset, some of the changes, the internal changes that they have made over the years for moving, moving the traffic, if you would, please?
Good evening, everybody, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Dickerson, you can hear me? Great. So back in twenty seventeen, Somerset Academy came to us about some minor improvements. They used the staff only on one side of their building, so what they did is they closed up their basketball courts, and they brought the staff all the way around the building, and had multiple drop off points, as some of you have suggested, on either side of the building. So back in seventeen, they made that initial change to basically try to get more cars onto the property. I know, Phil, we've had many conversations over the years about the busing and everything like that. This year, they are not meeting the goals that they wanted to meet, and again, as the Commissioner referenced, that this was a goal that they were trying to meet, but part of that is also due to COVID. A lot of parents have not put their, their children on buses, where in the past, they put them on buses, and we've seen empty buses going to both charter schools, traditional schools, et cetera. Somerset also had staggered start times, they've also moved their elementary students and pre-K students off of campus, they moved on to the South Campus, and those kids are usually the ones that take longer to get out of the car, right? You know, mom's got to put the backpack on, you know, mom's got to walk the kid up, so I know somebody mentioned about using Rose Price Park for drop off. Well, that drop off was because of the pre-K kids, they were getting walked up, because the parents, you know, they wanted to walk up those little ones up to the campus, so they no longer have those kids on campus. So Somerset right now, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys are six through twelve on Somerset North, so some of these changes have been where they have gone to try to make some of the, you know, make their own little corrections. Again, the biggest issue that we're seeing right now is that we have very limited car pools, and so the manager knows I do this, every morning, I go to the schools and I watch the traffic, and I, I see what's happening. If you watch the cars, there's one person, one parent, one kid per car. That is not something that's happened in the past, and that's due to, that's due to COVID. And so a lot of what we're seeing today is because there's been a change in behavior, and, and again, we all know that our residents are the ones that are being suffering from this, but that's where a lot of the, the challenges have come in. I know that the other schools in the area, they're trying to add more buses, but they've got to get people on those buses. I witnessed during a couple of my sessions watching the traffic, literally six, seven people getting off of a fifty-seat bus. So that's forty-three cars that are now bringing that, those kids to school that weren't there before, and that's, you know, and I'm sure our police officers can attest to some of that, you know, that's one of the biggest challenges I think we're seeing, so, and again, I apologize for the lady that was at that feet today, but, um, realistically, I, I do believe that the schools have been trying to accommodate, make some of these changes, and look, Somerset made physical changes to the campus, physical changes to how they do their drop off. When we have a problem, they try to make it, they try to address them and do double stacks or triple stacks, and do multiple drop off points. They are trying to make these changes, but sometimes it gets slow to implement, and sometimes we have to change behaviors. Again, Mr. Dodge, it's okay, I mentioned one other thing. I, I would often look to the parents themselves, because some of the parents are queuing up an hour before school gets out, and you know, sir, you talked about the idling vehicles, you know, that's a parent who.
Two hours, two hours.
Two hours, for, for some reason, that parent has to be the first possible person in line, and I, I guess I've never really understood that myself, you know, you can get through the line in three minutes.
They need to go to work.
Say again, I'm sorry, ma'am.
They need to go to work.
But that's, it's really, the, the drop off really actually is, is less of an issue as more of the pickup is, and, and part of that problem is because every parent wants to be in line, again, it's, it flip flops in different locations, but I say that, and that's what I'm asking you, you know, can you talk to your neighbors, are your neighbors part of that situation where they're, they're queuing up three hours, two hours ahead of time? And I know our officers, we've asked the schools to create press releases and, and share information about not blocking, stopping or standing, blocking eyeways, blocking driveways, but a lot of that has to be changed behavior on, on, on a bunch of different facets, so, Commissioner, I apologize for my drive.
No, that's okay, no, thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
They, they, we do not, the police officers have, and we've, we've had meetings about this, and like you said.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, I think it is.
Issue tickets.
Issue tickets, issue tickets. When, and I would say that when, when, as we're moving through this whole process, when changes are, are made, I would suggest, you know, that you would give everybody maybe a week's grace period, so that they figure out what it is, and after that point, then I would say, yeah, we're probably looking at wanting to, you know, you know, tick them a little bit and get that ticket going out there, a little grace period, but then after that, it needs to, it needs to happen. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Gonzalez, I live in Laguna Aias, we have a question on obviously the Sheridan traffic. Sheridan was expanded at some point a few years ago to a two-lane road, but it's now a two-lane road down to twenty-seven, and I think that should be looking to as well, especially in the intersection one ninety-six and Sheridan, that's very congested, and the left turn when you're heading west changes very quickly, and the line backs up onto the park maybe as well, so it's not just the Somerset issue or the Chapel Trail issue, it's the traffic issue.
It, it really is, and Ms. Gonzalez, I want to, I, thank you, we've had, I had our conversation about that, and I, and I explained to you that several months ago, I spoke with a city engineer about that particular ish, issue there at that intersection one ninety-six and Sheridan, so, uh, can you stand up for me, Donna?
So, in many situations, we have the right of way, so what Carl showed you tonight were places where the city has right of way to be able to make some of those changes. At one ninety-six and Sheridan Street, there's one property on the corner that we do not have the right of way for, so we can't look forward to making those additional changes. In fact, we have the right of way all the way around it, we've got one piece of property, and we don't have the ability to come in and take that right of way until that property comes in for entitlements and approvals.
So can you say something, the, the time for the, for the traffic point? That the left turn lasts a little bit longer?
So, that's a, that's a good point, when those situations happen, there's, there's two things that happen, so sometimes it's, and I'll say this, and I know I get some size, but very often, it's when fire personnel goes through an intersection, it recycles the signal. If you see that there's ever a very long delay, you can send a request into Broward County Traffic Engineering, and they do an investigation immediately. I've had residents from Laguna call me with the light at US twenty-seven in Sheridan, sometimes it gets stuck in place, and it feels like there's fifteen cars, twenty cars waiting, immediately I call Carl, call Carl's Broward County, and then we try to get it recycled. But there are, there are things that are out of our control on that end, that's another jurisdiction that has stayed in here, as Commissioner Seibel mentioned, Broward County controls that end of it.
Okay, but I won't leave your number. But, wait one second, before we go on with that, though, Mr. Kennedy, when you and I spoke, we talked also, well, I understand what you're saying about not having the property to do the full, the full four, four-way, but you also talked about the ability or the request for us to get left turn signals in those stoplights, is that all, have, can that be done sooner than having to wait for the rest of it? Can that, why would that have to, why would that have to wait?
Yeah, Broward County is currently looking at Sheridan and one ninety-six for protected left turn arrows on all four approaches, so in the next month, we should be getting a report as to whether those are warranted or not, there's been a significant amount of accidents there, so.
There was another bad one, maybe today.
It should be, you know, it, it should be warranted on at, at least one, if not more of the.
But I think that's going to help some of the stuff that you're asking about.
And you're heading east from twenty-seven onto Sheridan, and you're going to turn right on one ninety-six, and we have a right turn only lane there as well?
That's, that's exactly where we don't have the right of way.
We don't have the right of way.
And can that reserve?
We, we don't have, so.
But I thought it was the eastbound lane, probably.
So the north, the southwest corner of that intersection is a five-acre piece of land.
Right.
When and if that property owner comes forward, and he goes through the process to develop his property, he's going to lose about an acre and a half of land to be able to revive for that right turn lane. If you all remember, if you walked down one ninety-six, you see the sidewalk just stops on the, on the west side? That's because we don't have the right of way to go in there, so if I could paint that visual for you, notice our, we have those oak trees that run the whole street, the sidewalk just stops, that's because we don't have the right of way, and that's where those turn lanes would go, that's, so while Carl's looking at the turns, signals, we actually don't have the, that piece of right of way to finish that last section.
We see a call word.
We, we actually don't have that ability.
And I just, that creates a, a big problem for the residents, they had, this lady said, we have accidents happening in the carport.
Yeah.
All the time. The other thing I wanted to mention, I've been a Somerset parent for the last thirteen years, so I've seen all that the traffic goes, but I've also seen the anchor that you were saying before, I mean, at least their time. I'm lucky enough to have a good relationship with the staff, and I'm happy, very proud to see how much representation there is to come in here, because they're ready to at least tackle these issues and face the issues.
We've, you know, we've always, we've always had a great relationship with, with Somerset, we've just had, we've just had, you know, it's just issues, it's growing issues, it's whatever, but we have to find that, that's what we're trying to do, is find that place where it works for everybody.
And I remember when they opened the new campus, the South Campus, the first few months, there was a gate open in the fence facing Pine's Boulevard, so parents, we were able to park and walk our kids to school, and then do the same thing in the afternoon in the. and then do the same thing in the afternoon if they came. Two months into this school year, when they opened a few years ago, it was closed. And we were told it was a liability issue for the city and that's why we didn't have any access.
I don't, I don't have any information about that, but.
I do know there's a fence there, there's a gate, um, there's a grass area facing Pines and we were able to park, walk, gather kids. And I love picking my daughter from school. I don't have the ability to do that.
That was, that, uh, location is one of the ones that we're looking at.
I know, and you said just for queuing. I'm asking if we can, in the meantime, while we're looking at the queue.
I'm hoping queuing happens real soon.
So at least allow us to use the car and open the fence so that we can walk home to.
Well, have come, yeah. Thank you.
And then the other thing for the police officers, we definitely like having them around and we need more police presence, especially on 196 and Pines.
Mr. Dodge, would you, um, talk about our budget issue right now?
That intersection, I mean, if you're heading south on 196 and you're trying to get into the queue line, it's impossible because the people heading east, I mean, right on 196, they think they have the right-of-way and they don't stop. They don't, I mean, I've seen, seen on 196.
They just keep rolling.
Over and over. And either I block the intersection or I have to go straight and make a little U-turn in order to be able to pick up my daughter from school.
Mr. Dodge, would you, um, we just had a, on our budget, there was a, a discussion about additional officers. Would you, would you address that with the show?
Uh, yes, each year we've added, uh, a number of new, uh, police officer positions to the city. Those, uh, positions for officers are for patrolling the streets for issues. Uh, it's very, very difficult, as well as we're providing school resource officers. And, uh, to provide more and more traffic officers, we're actually pulling police officers off the road for what they need to do to also be in the communities. We will have these discussions regarding the areas that there's some difficulty. Uh, but I think what we really need to do is to work with the schools and the parents who basically are the problem. They sometimes don't even listen to the officer. They're rude, they just ride right by them.
I agree with you.
And you can't stop every single car and issue a ticket because you create a, a greater issue for backing up traffic. So it's a dilemma, we are looking at it and we're trying to find solutions. So we have to talk and constantly promote to the schools at our parent advisory meetings. Hopefully, they do the same thing in the PTA meetings, that parents need, uh, to be very considerate of others. And if you're in a hurry, they're only concerned about themselves, they want to get in and get out.
And I, and I agree with you, like, at least from Somerset's standpoint, as a parent. They can tell you, I get they came from the school, letting us know what they got in front of them. But there's only so much they can do to control the parents. If you have police presence, you avoid having car accidents. I mean, I, a few years ago before COVID, somebody hit me because I was trying to get into the line and I had the right-of-way. You know, and that's ridiculous. Can we please, as we're quick, say, have a right turn light on 196 from Pines? If you're heading east?
Have a, well, first of all, any type of right turn lane or all.
Because we, we have turned right on 196, they head south on 196.
Right.
And the traffic light included a right turn.
That's something we have to request from.
Because they're not respecting the red line, that's the problem.
We have to, 196 and Pines?
196 and Pines.
That's something we have to take up with the state because Pines Boulevard is a state road. But Carl is making a note of it, we'll certainly look at it.
Yeah, because your state, for example, if it's a rainy day, forget it. I mean, that's chaos. And I saw police almost close to Northwest Forest Street, but there was no police presence, nobody was.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I don't want to deceive anybody. You talked about taking, taking right-of-way for a public purpose. That was what Mr. Stan talked about. Um, he's, this is what I thought he said. Condemnation of eminent domain, which the gentleman was commenting on before. The city does have the right of eminent domain, does have the right to condemn privately owned property for a public use, public purpose, for parks, for roads, for infrastructure, for pipes, et cetera. Problem is, you have to have an actual set of plans, you have to have an actual program and a project. Otherwise, the courts in Broward County in the state of Florida will not allow local government to take that property for private use, for a public use without the plans. Problem is, you can't draw plans without having the plans actually in place. And that's the conundrum. And with all due respect, the condemnation is a very, very, very expensive process. Because what you're doing is you're, you're basically forcing a sale of privately owned property to the public. And what Mike Stan talked about is when, when hasn't hit that property and it comes in to actually get their approval, they're going to dedicate that property for zero. That's going to be their obligation, people who get their development rights. It's a, it's a balancing test, unfortunately. And yes, the city has certain legal abilities, but they're limited also by state law.
Thank you, ma'am. Great. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Anna Perez. I live at 20511 Northwest 7th Street, um, off of Northwest Forest Street. Thank you so much for doing this. I will save my complaint about Northwest Forest Street for tomorrow. Um, but I also, I want to say. I sit on the board of the City of Pembroke High Charter School West Campus.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and so one of my initiatives during our last advisory board meeting was to bring up the traffic issue. I have two children, one who graduated from there, one who's currently attending. Both my children have always rode the bus, no problems whatsoever. And so I did an unofficial survey of the parents and asked, hey, why aren't you riding the bus? Um, so 34% of the parents said that they weren't riding the bus because they were concerned for COVID. 17%, they were concerned for general safety. 14% said they just didn't have enough information for how to sign up. 10% said it wasn't available in their area. 10% said there wasn't a convenient time. And 14% said the child didn't ride the bus, can't control that. The rest of the things, you can probably kind of control. And so I gave this data at the meeting. And so one of the things that the City of Pembroke High Charter School did was send out an email to all the parents, inform them, hey, these are the safety initiatives on the bus. We have mandatory mask wearing, we have social distancing, we have X percent of ridership right now. There's plenty of space, please sign up. They've also, um, partnered with the city, um, the Department of Transportation to have an app that parents can download where you can track the bus, you can see where your kids are. Um, so I appreciate, yes, thank you for City of Pembroke High Charter School. Um, so I appreciate you guys' initiative. I think you're, it's, it's great, but it's going to take time. And so I was just wondering, have you tried to partner with the schools to try to help them to educate the parents on the safety? I mean, if we think that 14% of these people said they know how, if I think that 14% traffic relief, I'll take it, you know? Um, so if there's anything we can do on the education side, partnering with the schools, I emailed, um, the principal of Somerset, he responded, which I appreciate, because I don't even.
Mr. Montero is actually here tonight.
Oh, yes. So, thank you, he responded to me. Um, and so his suggestion, you know, he said, hey, listen, I'm sorry, I'm trying to inform parents and, you know, we just need more police presence. And that's, yep, that's unfortunate.
And, and you know, and you, and you brought up several points, other folks have brought up several points. There's not, there's not one, there's not one issue, there are many issues. There's not one solution, there's going to be a lot of different solutions. But the purpose of what I'm trying to accomplish here and my colleagues, what we're trying to do is to actually start these conversations, get what you all are talking about. See how through engineering, see how through legal, see how through all of our staff, our PD, our fire, how do we, and all of you, schools, parents, how do we now take all of that and make some projects out of it that make sense and that are going to help us, you know, help us come to some solutions? There's not a one-size-fits-all. There just is not. And we'd be foolish to say that, you know, we're just going to make a one-size. We're going to have to look at each of them. And again, as, as Mr. Dodge has said, and I've said it over and, and over and over again, we got the most complaints from out west, that's where we, that's where we chose to start out there. It's going to be citywide. My, my initiatives have always been citywide initiatives. And again, that's why I'm so happy that my colleagues are here, you know, in, in support of this because we're just going to keep moving, you know, once we get, we're going to hopefully keep moving these and, and find those, again, those same kind of, but how do we deal with them? And how do we do that uniqueness because each one is different? So, but thank you for being out there.
Well, thank you. I'm just trying to help be part of the solution. Um, so anything I can do to the parent, as a board member, happy to help. And I just think a little education for how safe the buses are.
Yeah, we have very low-cost initiatives. Okay, thank you so much. Very appreciated.
I live out in West Broward, Pembroke High. My grandson's 25, uh, fortunately I retired. And the family, the extended family, we were able to take him to school because we had to. Because we, all three schools were within this two-mile radius where he could ride the bus. Now, as I see it, so long as I was taking him away to school and my wife was taking him away to school, it was like, the problem is not the school traffic, the problem is people at work. People have to go to work and they just get in the way. We have no way to do it for school.
Mr. Young, I am so, I am. I am so, I am so glad you're here. You know, Mr. Young, Mr. Young, I am so glad you're here. And I want you to write that note that all these workers can take into their boss and say, Mr. Young said it's okay I'm late today. Excuse me. Yes, sir. Follow that actor, right?
Yeah, I'm familiar with it. DJ Hepburn, I live in Chapel Lake Estates and run an organization in warehouses on 911 to 229. So I'm glad the principal of Somerset is there. Because the lot lot up there has hired the police officers like you to stack up these offices so that the parents from the park in the warehouses, seven o'clock in the morning, parents are racing through. I don't mind helping parents, but when it's a challenge to run a business, all the parents are going to be rude and, and be irritated because you're trying to get into your parking space to get to work, that's a problem. And so a kid is going to get hurt out in that commerce center. That's my biggest concern. They speed through there. The police don't stop them, they run out to the front and then the police go circling around to, to tell them they can't walk there, they come back. Someone's going to get hurt. And the parents are in concern. I think over the years, Somerset has sent out emails to the parents. I think two years ago, they let the maintenance staff in our, in our parking lot deter the parents. But the parents aren't listening and it's, it's a problem. And again, don't, don't mind helping all as much as we can. However, the parents are going to be rude, speed through, hump the horn like it's their property. So if we have challenges getting on our homes, challenges getting work, challenges to try to operate a business, because I tell people, you can't come between 2:00 and 4:30 or 3:30, don't come. That's a challenge. So again, at Somerset, whatever you can do to deter the parents of parking in the commerce center, it'll be.
Well, I, I would ask Mr. Montero, I would ask you if you would get with this gentleman perhaps and see what you all can try to work out. I think that would be a good step towards that. Mr. Montero, thank you, sir. Okay, one, one last. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Young, well, thanks so much. Laura Fendek, I'm one of the board members of Friends of the Pines and also an Anthony Potter resident. I really just wanted to express appreciation for you being here and for bringing the other leaders of the city here. Not only because of all the great ideas that the residents and everybody brought forward today, but that you're listening. And so as a member of some of our social media, the biggest challenge that we as residents have as members of these communities is that we're not feeling like we're getting hurt. So thank you for bringing us together for this. In fact, when I looked at a lot of the social media and the postings that were out there, it was almost discounted by some of the members of the city, which is unfortunate. These are people who are trying to balance children, after-school activities, preschool activities, work schedules, COVID stressors, changing traffic patterns. All of this is going on and we just need an opportunity to express the concerns that we're having. You've got a lot of really great ideas and I'm sure there will be more to come. Some can be done quickly, some will take more study. Please, I am asking you, as a resident and as a member of this community, don't let this turn into something that becomes death by commission. We have a lot of quick hits that we can do. We should have engagement. I support the other gentleman who said we have stakeholders who should be here. You may not have, as the city officials, the ability to prevent schools from getting added or built where they are, but you should have the ability to hold them accountable. Schools should, for-profit schools in particular, they should provide security guards or traffic support or parking options or staggered schedules, the list goes on. Right? They should be there too. So, we need to do this together. The, the last thing I'll say in closing is in listening to all of this, and again, thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's hard to make this possible with everyone's schedule, so super appreciate it. But the other thing is, I find it really ironic that we're having this conversation about traffic for existing situations and yet, time and time again, we continue to prove more development, more townhomes, more growth. We can't manage, we can't manage the traffic we have today. We're adding 200, 300, 400, up and down Pines Boulevard. Tell me how that's going to work. You might live on the east side, it might not be in your backyard. It affects all of us. This is citywide. Thank you for the great information.
All right, we're going to leave last two and then we're, and then that's, that's going to be it for tonight for.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Adriana. I'm one of the board members of Estancia. I actually live right outside our back gate, right across the street from Somerset's South Campus. I have to give my hats off to my Somerset people because they have done the best that they can with what they can do with the traffic. My son started there when he was in kindergarten, he's now in third grade. And they got, uh, armed guard out there because every day they're doing, pretty much getting almost run over. He's out there in the rain with his gun, which it's like power to him. We got Pines cops out there sometimes. We have our SRO that's out there, that's on the other side in the morning. I mean, they are doing everything they can. I know that everybody keeps blaming the school. I also, I don't know where the lady was, the, the board member from, uh, the Pines Charter School, oh, they're right. Um, I, you guys are doing the best that you can. I can't think that we have to put everything on the schools. They are doing their, their part. It's up to us parents and, and the community to also do our part. One thing I want to mention, across the street, I live across the street, I'm not allowed to walk my child across the street because there's no crossing guard. There's nowhere for me to cross the street. I was told this from day one when I was in kindergarten by the police, somebody very high in the police department said, you can't cross. I crossed the first three days of school, prior to COVID, obviously, but, um, and I was told, no more. You cannot, you have to come in a car. So we need to address that. I don't know why we can't have any flashing lights. I don't know if that's because it's, it's not a city charter school, Somerset. So I don't know if we can change that, if those rules apply. But we can do something for the Somerset as well as for Franklin. I mean, Franklin's there too, you know? People will slow down when they see the flashing lights. They have a little, 15, you know, miles per hour.
I would, I would ask then if you would just send a little quick email with, with your concerns and what your suggestions are, and I certainly can, can.
Perfect.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Yes, sir, this is our last one for tonight.
Maybe it's appropriate. I'm Scott Barnett, I live in Estancia.
Hello, Mr. Barnett, how are you?
Yeah, I'm probably the one the authorities are looking for.
I'm sorry?
I'm probably the one the authorities are looking for, but.
I heard that. I, I've heard that.
Um, and Mayor Oris, I meant no disrespect, actually, you've been right over the years and, um, I respect. You know, everything that everybody does. Something, um, a real important point to make is the people, the commissioners that are here on the commission and the mayor, one thing we tend to forget is we think of big government. It's not big government. These people are our representatives. So they're doing what we ask them to do. We ask them to take care of things and they listen. And many people will be surprised that our commissioners do listen. But the thing is, is everybody, we need this kind of participation. If you go to a commission meeting, people only go there because they're involved in one issue and we need more participation. If you want to see change, as much as I complain on Nextdoor and everybody else complains on Nextdoor, you have to participate in government. And, and these people are here to listen to us. There's nothing wrong with what they're doing, they're here to listen to us. Um, I saw the proposal in the last commission meeting about some of the fixes they wanted to do for traffic. And I think it's great, some of the little patches around the city, which is appropriate. Um, I'm, I'm always a little bit concerned that we're paying for what seems to be the responsibility to some of these charter schools, you know? They are, I was, everybody may or may not know, they're basically allowed to pretty much put a school almost wherever they want without going through the commission. They put a school there, traffic, when Somerset Elementary opened up, I talked to the police officers that were out there, they basically said, you know, we, we only had three days notice that this was happening. Um, there seemed to be a lack of communication with that. Overall, what we need, at least I believe that we should look for for the future, nothing that you can do right now in the next couple of months. We need an overall sustainable transportation plan that has to do with buses. I know Commissioner Castillo proposed mini buses in the past. Because of the limitation of the two mile rule with many schools, there's a lot of people that could benefit from a small mini bus system. It works great in the city. We have one of the few cities that has a great little mini shuttle system and it works great. Look Century Village. These people get around. They have a great time. You know, they do well with it. So why can't the kids benefit from the same type of transportation?
And are you talking, are you, are you referring to, um, just like the charter school? Are you talking?
I'm talking about the people that.
But, no, no, traditional, uh, like Broward County school? I mean, define more for me.
To, to, to go, you know how they talk about the last mile? Well, let's talk about the last two miles. There's that, the people within two miles of schools that cannot get a bus. They're not allowed to staple, as apparently as I understand it. They're not allowed to get, you know, they can't take a bus. You know, we have to think about a sustainable transportation system, looking towards the future, looking towards electric cars, looking towards solar, installing more solar stations, encouraging obviously more carpooling. But a mini bus system that you offered in the past was a, was a great idea that I think a lot of people would be in favor of because it helps the city keep moving.
I did bring forward, and if you were here, because I know you came out a little bit, a little bit late. Um, what we had, the city manager actually had offered some, a few years back when we were having some discussions again, um, about it that, that, for example, like I live in Spring Valley, that the Spring Valley Park, and there was another location that would be, and I told everybody here, like a bus depot where parents could drop their children off there and then there would be buses there that would take them to whatever school they needed to go to. It just, it just took no traction. It just took no traction.
I, I mean, and what, yes.
But that doesn't mean we're not going to look at those issues again because odds are different. Odds are just are different. So that is, that is.
Yeah, and as we get more congested, there'll be more demand for such a system. But one last point, um, is I, I don't understand why the extension to, uh, twenty-seven Pembroke Road keeps getting, it can't keep, keeps getting kicked down the road. Um, I understand that there's issues that, you know, the city can only do so much. I know there's, uh, Broward County, FDOT. I know that there's different authorities that have to deal with those things, but I, I don't understand it because the, if you can tell me, the latest trajectory for that is twenty twenty-eight? Am I wrong?
I don't know, sir. I don't know.
In the last commission meeting?
Carl, do you have any information?
Um, that would be for the completion of the entire project, which includes widening Pembroke Road from Dykes to 196. That, that's one portion. Uh, the other portion is, uh, adding roadway from 196 to twenty-seven. And the other portion is Miramar Parkway, the extension of that roadway intersecting with Pembroke Road.
Right, I'm talking, yeah, the Pembroke Road.
So the Pembroke Road portion is the first one that will be completed. So of those three projects that make up the entire project, that will be the first one that will be bid and built. Uh, the, uh.
Ask you a quick question interrupt real quick. When was the first time that that, that subject was approached? When was the first time they talked about extending that, more or less, commission, I mean, in the commission?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking.
I understand.
When, when was the idea of extending Pembroke Road across through to US twenty-seven considered in the commission?
That's always been, that's been, I mean, I think it was all being, it's my understanding, yes, Mike.
The commission has talked about that project for many years. We've tried to go for tiger grants many times. Part of the reason that we're in this situation now is that we partnered with the City of Miramar. We have a joint participation agreement so that Miramar and the City of Pembroke Pines can go together because we don't have the right of way in the City of Pembroke Pines to extend the road. The right of way is actually in the City of Miramar. So at the last commission meeting, the commission, two, two commission meetings ago, the commission passed an ordinance, view a land swap so that we're able to acquire more of the right of way to stop water management. And, um, uh, Florida D E P owns some of the right of way. So we're doing a land swap with them. Actually selling the land to Miramar. Miramar is giving the land to those two agencies so that we can get the right of way to connect out to US twenty-seven. The, the bigger issue is that the right of way didn't exist in the City of Pembroke Pines. So while we were going for the tiger grants and all these funding sources to build the road, we didn't have all the right of way to get there.
Okay, that, yeah. Uh, one of my last questions about that is, Mayor Wardis, you're, you're the chairman of the Broward D E P O, right? Okay. Uh, the question is, is what kind of influence do you have to help move your projects like that along?
Whoa, 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 you can't.
Oh, he can't? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. No, 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 no worries, no worries.
We, we can talk about it tomorrow night.
Okay.
We can talk about it tomorrow night.
Right. Uh, yeah, I mean, just to conclude, thank you for listening. And just this meeting, having this meeting is a big difference. And it's nice that there's a city that we can go to where there's response. And that's all we ask for is response.
All right, so, so, um, I, I think we've had a, a meeting. I think we've had a meeting. Um, and so, um, I would like to just kind of close up if I, if I could by saying, and I'm going to say I am, but what I'm really saying is that we are, we are. We are committed to finding solutions. These issues are citywide, so we must work together to find a relief. My colleagues have shown their support for this initiative by approving my agenda request. And I want to again, thank you all, Mayor, Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Castillo, Vice, Vice Mayor, there you are, for supporting this and realizing that together, this is, and this is an initiative that we need, we need to take forward. Our residents are begging, our residents are asking, they are pleading, and they are, and they are deserving of our efforts to make their life better all the way around and our businesses, and our businesses. Um, so I want to thank, I want to thank my colleagues yet again for that. But I want to tell you that I've sent an email to our city manager and I've requested a slot to be held on our next commission meeting agenda, which would be in October, regarding the formulation of a master traffic plan, which is I think something that was alluded to tonight, uh, that we are doing fixes, we are doing fixes. And, but we have big issues all around and we do need a master traffic plan. And, um, and I am requesting that, uh, that my colleagues would allow me to take the lead on that initiative as we go forward. Um, so I will look forward to that. Tonight's meeting was, uh, to provide information to you all, to our residents, most importantly, to listen to you, our residents, to hear what your ideas are and to find a way to work together to find solutions. I did say here, I was going to open, at that point, I was going to open the floor for questions, but I quite honestly think we might be done with questions. And so again, I would say to you all, thank you so much. You do live in a fabulous city that does care. And I think this is an outward sign that we are willing to listen to you all, we're willing to take the lead on initiatives. And, um, we're going to, we're going to find solutions and we're going to make things better, but we ask for your continued cooperation again and understanding. So thank you all so much. Have a good evening and care for the nation.